... here on October 10th, 2017 at 6:05. It looks like Joe Ford and Kevin Manley won't be joining this evening, so if we can open our meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And if we could take a moment of silence to reflect on our service members and first responders here and abroad. Thank you. In accordance with mass general law, I don't believe anybody's here taping the meeting except for Elcat. We're up to public comments. We have no public comments at this time, council comments. Everything's good. And I guess we'll move right along to Denise's report.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Seems like it's been a long time since we saw each other, but it hasn't really. It's just been a couple of weeks.
It hasn't for me.
Well, yeah, it has been for you, Paul. Shred Day, I think I reported that we were going to be having one. It was a huge success. Approximately 350 boxes, equalling 9,500 pounds of paper were disposed of. All that relates to less use of the footprint that we have in Town Hall, which is very limited, and here, you know, various spaces that we own, and much better use of that for other things than paper. So, it's all good. I'd offer to provide breakfast to the department that disposed of the most paper. I don't have an official, but I think it's the town clerk's office, which really is lucky for me, because that's only like three people, instead of like the police department, which I could've gone broke on bagels and coffee for. So, the health department also had a great success. They doubled the number of vaccinations that they had for their flu clinic. 110 flu, seven pneumonia, 10 tetanus, death area, and pertussis, and 16 shingle shots were administered. They're now looking forward to next year, making those numbers even bigger. Town departments will be providing the Director of Finance and me with their 2018-19 capital project requests by early November. Once they've submitted capital requests, we'd like to start heading toward the 2018-19 budget process. To that end, I'd like the council to start thinking about the council's priorities, which in the charter is spelled out as a responsibility that you all have. Last year, we were all new at this. We didn't really get through that process very quickly, and I'd like to have the priorities so that we can actually state them in the letter that goes to the departments early rather than later. So, if the first meeting in November, we can address the council's pri-- have a sort of dialogue about that. Where you think the town is headed, we can, I can probably have the Director of Finance do the financial presentation by then. I'm not sure, depending on the audit, you know, where we stand on that piece of things, and just start that budget process early this year. Everybody would be happy about that. The trash postcard residents rely on to indicate their trash week was in error, and it said this week was a holiday week, which meant that Monday was not trash pickup. And people, although we put it on Facebook, we've done one of those telephone
Robo calls.
Mass communication calls, and it was on the town's website in a couple of different spots. A lot of people were running down the driveway with their trash barrel when the truck had just gone by. So, we got a lot of calls today. I think it's probably remedied, for the most part. Republic is also helping us in that they'll go back if somebody has put it out. They're doing today's again tomorrow. So, it'll work itself out, but it's a little bit messy, and that was a miscommunication on our part, but, you know, you do the calendar for the whole year. It's just something that happened. To assist while the town planners out of, on extended leave, I've been attending planning board meetings, so I can update you on a couple of recent actions that they took. The overlay district that's in the old package machinery proposal is moving forward in a pretty positive direction. There's been a lot of give and take between the folks that are applying for this new overlay district and the planning board. They seem to be moving along, and I think probably within a month, we should be ready to make a decision on that particular thing. Then that would be coming to you all, and it looks like a good, positive plan for that site. Also heard at the last planning meeting was a modification for the special permit for the gas station that everybody seems to be watching to see when it's going to open and what it's going to be. And rumors still continue as to what's going to occupy it, but at the end of the day, it looks like maybe within a couple of weeks, we should be getting some movement on there. The shelving is in, everything is there. They were waiting for a name change and possibly change in hours. They did change the hours from 24/7 to opening at 5:00 in the morning and closing at 1:00 in the morning, which is more in, you know, line with where I think everybody is headed at this point, back when they first came in for that. I don't think that was a clear direction, so they were willing to compromise, which was great.
Still gonna be a shell station with the gas?
I don't know. They're not committing either way. They're saying, yeah, as soon as we know what the deal is, we will let you all know. I'm surprised they don't know by now, but we're just gonna wait and see.
They need a sign permit.
Also, I've contacted the PVPC, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, to look into possible assistance while the planner's out, and I met with somebody from the PVPC, Catherine Rette and Larry Smith, and they're willing to assist us with some consulting services. I have to figure out what the agreement's going to be, how many hours, how we're gonna pay for that, so, but we definitely need some assistance up there. It can't be the chairman that's always assisting, because it could turn into a conflict for him. So, he can't advise a developer and then vote on it, so, you know, and I don't have the time to delve into the zoning regulations and all of that to the degree that we'd need to. So, this might be a good fix for a little while. The regional dispatching group is meeting tomorrow regarding options now that we've received notification of partial funding of the grant that we need to establish that. I will let you know probably at the next meeting where we're headed, or you're welcome to call after that meeting if you like. Last Friday, the HR Director, Recreation Commission Chairman, former Rec Director John Whalen, and I interviewed candidates for the Rec Director position. It's the first time I'd experienced a Skype interview, which was pretty cool. You know, they sort of come in and out because they're, you know, far away and stuff, but we have some good, positive candidates, and I think the HR Director's on vacation this week, so it'll be next week that we'll probably make a decision on that. Also, I wanted to assure everybody, because I'm hearing, and I didn't put it on here, but I'm hearing that there's concerns that our newest councilman is receiving two pays for, and that's against the charter, one for his animal control position and one for his councilman position, so that everybody's aware. We've asked that he continue as the animal control person, because at this time of year, there are inspections, Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's the animal inspection?
Barn inspections.
Barn inspections. And to find somebody that's certified, that can go into the barns and the chicken coops, I can fill in a lot of places, but I am not doing that. So, there's a gap there that is just at a critical time. This is the time of year those inspections are being done, and for him to be removed from that particular function, the timing isn't great, that it was a councilman appointment at the same time as barns and chickens and goats and pigs need to be inspected. So, he has opted to remove himself from the pay piece of the council position and take the inspection pay for that time, and has asked for a ruling from the State Ethics Board as to what a clear direction is for that. So, anybody that has concerns about that, I'm sure they're welcome to talk with you, Tom, or with me, and I'm very comfortable with the arrangement that we have. Please let me know if you have any concerns with that. Finally, I've attached an overview of services and statistics at the Senior Center. As you know, I do a one-on-one every month with every department head, and Carolyn came in this month with this overview that I said, "Oh, this is wonderful. Would you mind if I share it with the council?" And she said, "Oh, that would be great." It has statistical information, how many visits of different kinds, how many people participate in different things, and also an overview of the different programs that they do. So, I thought it would be a nice way to give you all just a little snapshot of what the Senior Center provides for us. And finally, a reminder that the Fire Department is hosting their annual open house this Saturday from noon to 3:00. I'm gonna assume that most of you don't have children that would want the little plastic fire hats, but maybe some of you have grandchildren. So, that's my report, respectfully submitted, Denise Menard. Thank you.
Thanks, Denise. If we could entertain a motion regarding the approval of the open session, special meeting minutes dated September 26th, 2017?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
The motion passes. Open session minutes, again, meeting minutes, same date, September 26th, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
One change. In the minutes, it reflects that all in favor voted aye. I abstained from that vote since I was not present at the meetings, so I wanted to make that, put that in the record.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll modify my motion with that amendment.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, I'm sorry.
And again, September 26th, 2017, executive session, meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And just note that I abstained on all three, because I wasn't here on the 26th.
Okay. And under Communication, Correspondence, and Announcements, Community Events, I think Denise touched on the Fire Department Open House, October 14th. Rotary Club, Celebrate East Long Meadow, October 21st, 2017. Actually, we're gonna be talking about that under Licensing Matters. Licensing Subcommittee Report. Kathy, would you have any?
I do.
An update for us?
Thank you. The Licensing Subcommittee, made up of Mr. O'Connor, Mr. Manley, myself, Marge LaRocca from the Town Manager's Office, Councilor Kane will serve as an alternate, and we have, for our next meeting, invited Chief DeLassio to become a member of the committee as well. We met for the first time on the 29th of September and have our second meeting this coming Friday at 3:00. Our initial charge is to look at the liquor licenses that the town has the authority to issue to the various restaurants and clubs and entities in town. The major focus for the immediate future is to look at the hours of operation of all of the establishments and try to standardize the hours for all. Right now, they're all over the board. Some close at 10:00, some close at 12:00, some are issued to 1:00 a.m., some are issued to 2:00 a.m. So, one of our goals is to come up with a standard parameter of hours that we will offer to any of the applicants for these licenses. The second thing that the subcommittee will tackle is the fee schedule for issuance of both one-day liquor license permits as well as the annual fee to hold licenses and sell alcohol, retail, or on premises. The last time these fees were addressed were many, many years ago. So, currently, Ms. LaRocca is gathering the fee schedules from surrounding towns, so that we have a sense of what the industry will bear and to ultimately bring the East Long Meadow fees into line with neighboring communities. That could result down the road in some sticker shock perhaps, but we are woefully behind the eight ball in charging what ought to be charged to these establishments. Future things that we will consider are investigating some software to manage all of this information, so long as it is compatible with the immune system that the town uses now for all of its information. And then, lastly, working with the Health Inspector or Director and the Building Commissioner, as well as the Police and Fire Departments, we will hope to establish a bylaw or some kind of regulation that speaks to the fact that any entity holding a license must be up to date in not only having tax obligations paid, but being up to code in all of those various departments. And should any one of those areas fall into arrears for whatever the reason, the bylaw will give the council the opportunity through the ABCC to suspend the license temporarily until the matters are resolved. So, those are the four major things, and we're off to a good start, and we hope to have our homework done on all of those areas prior to January 1st, when new licenses have to be applied for, for 2018. If we decide that the hours, the parameters for hours will affect or impact any entity that already has hours that go beyond what the subcommittee has in mind, in an effort to make sure that we're not compromising any of their employees' loss of work hours, if that might be the case, we'll make that piece not go into effect till July 1st of 2018. So, there'll be a six-month leeway there. And of course, obviously, as stated by the ABCC, if there should be a change in any one of those hours, we will do the obligatory public hearing to do that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Don, could you give us an update on the Media Communications Subcommittee?
Love to. My challenge was try to find some of the best minds at East Long Meadow to help get on the committee, and I think we're really fortunate in this town. First and foremost, I asked Dylan Pylon. Dylan's a young man who went through our school system, and he has a business here in town, and he's the founder of Cloud Nine Marketing, and he is actually the demographic we're trying to hit, as well as others who are big in social media. And if you follow Dylan, you know he knows social media at all levels. And the market effectively in social media is not limited to Facebook, which is actually becoming more and more an older person's market, as it's becoming less cool to the millennials, so they're going on Snapchat, Instagram, and others, and Twitter. So, this helps, having him on the team is a tremendous asset. In fact, he's already been posting that he's on this committee enthusiastically on multiple forums. The other person we asked is, I asked is Donnie Kavanaugh. Don is also a police officer, is familiar with our police website, which gives so much information, but in addition to that, he has another hat, that he is the founder and owner of Seven Roads Media. So, he has a good media background as well, and so this allows, bringing somebody with the, knowing the innards of our town marketing important messages out, as well as somebody who's independently familiar with social media as well, marketing is great. Of course, what committee would be complete without our IT Director, Ryan Quimby? Ryan enthusiastically, I said, "Well, I was gonna ask you." He said, "I thought you would." And he was like, "Data comes please." So, he's really, this is great. He's already given me a list that he believes of all the social media pages that we have here in East Long Meadow, as well as who's the ones responsible. And then, last but not least, I'm very excited to add Ed Zemba. Now, Ed is, as you know, is the President, the head of the East of the River Chamber of Commerce, recently picked. He's also the, you know, owner of Robert Charles Photography. But as far as social media, he has taken a concept called Unify Against Bullying, and has made it global. So, we talk about somebody that not only is, you know, has taken concept of how to get a message out, has done it in an incredibly effective way. The latest challenge is trying to get a video they put together to get on, get this message on the Ellen DeGeneres Show as well. So, that just came out, and I just posted that on my own personal Facebook page to try to help get the message out. So, I did get a call or message from a department head who cautioned me on the committee about working on social media policies and so forth, and I reminded this individual. I said, "No, that's not what we're doing. We are not doing anything in terms of touching anyone's websites, anyone's social media pages, or anything. The whole purpose of this committee is to get the message out." I've looked at a number of pages, great information, maybe one like, two likes, something like that, but the way to get a message out is to take the message and cross-market it, sort of like what Ed is trying to do to get that message out to Ellen DeGeneres Show. So, that's what we would like to try to do on a much simpler local level, of getting the good word of an event like our flu shot, and go beyond the methodology that they're using. I was talking to somebody, I got the flu shot, I was talking to somebody, he said, "Well, I don't go on Facebook." And I said, "No, love, that's fine, but a good group of people in this town do go on social media." Well, I get the message through my phone. I said, "Yes, you still have a landline, but there's a number of people that don't, and we have the new 911 text system, but not many people know about that message to sign up for." So, viewers at home, sign up for the 911 text system, it works. I signed up, and I can tell you, you get some very good information from the town. So, anyway, what we're gonna try to do is I'm gonna try to reach out to everyone and find out what's a common time. I'm open, since most of the people here are self-employed, we can try to see if we can find a time, even during the daytime, and then I will talk to our clerk's office and see if we can find a place to hold it, hold the first meeting, as well as to be able to properly post an agenda. So, there you have it.
Thank you.
Pleasure.
So, if we move down to Licensing Matters. So, three consecutive days for a one-day liquor license for St. Luke's Greek Orthodox Church for October 13th through the 15th, which would include 13th, 14th, 15th of 2017, from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. for the Taste of Greece with a band and Greek dancers.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Next is a one-day liquor license for St. Luke's Greek Orthodox Church for November 10th. That one will run from 6:30 to 9:30 p.m. for Unico fundraiser for East Long Meadow High School Scholarships.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Just a quick question to reel back to the previous one on the Taste of Greece. Approximate number of persons on each one was 2,000 people. Do they mean 2,000 per day or 2,000 over the three days?
2,000 over the three days.
Okay, just wanna be clear, because each application has 2,000. I was going, "Boy, we need some extra police support on that one."
Yeah, we checked.
Okay, just checking, because that's what it says.
Good catch.
Let's see, the third one is another, a one-day liquor license for St. Luke's Greek Orthodox Church for February 9th, 2018, 6:30 to 9:00 p.m. Is that the one I just?
Nope.
Okay, it is different. Okay, I see Unico again. Okay, two events. One's the porcata, right, Rich? What's the other dinner?
They both are.
Both porcata dinners? Okay. For Unico fundraiser for the East Long Meadow High School Scholarships.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just the fact that I'm very happy that you're coming in three months early instead of our usual week early.
I'm just impressed he's tip-certified.
Wears many hats.
Sure does.
So, our fourth one-day liquor license is actually?
We didn't vote on it.
We just had motion.
We didn't vote on it.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the fourth single-day liquor license is actually sponsored by the Rotary Club of East Long Meadow and local businesses and nonprofit organizations. This liquor license for Fazio's Restaurant for October 21st, 2017, 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. for Celebrate East Long Meadow with Live Music from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. I can only say that I did spend some time in Town Hall today and looked at everything required to enable this permit, and everything appeared to be in order. So, if we could?
So moved. And this will be in center field, and it's not at Fazio's, just so the public understands.
It will be in center field.
It's gonna be held in center field.
Yes.
And shake the road. Okay.
It will be a fenced-off area, there will be somebody there monitoring bracelets for people that will be indulging in alcoholic beverages, and as it says, I read on the bottom here, there'll also be dancing from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m., and there will be detail officers to make sure everything is in order.
Mike, if I may. Liquor's gonna be served from 4:00 p.m. to 9:30. I'll do what I wish. It's not gonna be served 4:00 to 10:00.
Right.
They serve 4:00 to 9:30.
We looked at it, at least it's covered under the umbrella from the time of 12:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., so they're planning on starting later and stopping, obviously short of 10:00 p.m., so.
Just a quick question. On this application, on the cover page, persons under 21 in a, I'm sorry, liquor to be sold, there's two options, served or sold. And served is checked off, so do we imply there that it's being sold if it's being served? Or should both be?
Wouldn't it be like a bottle?
Sold is like a package store.
Yeah.
Served is being served a drink.
Okay.
So, if I want to have a party and not serve liquor, let's say I just said, "I'm just having a wedding type thing, an open bar."
You're serving the alcohol.
Serving.
You're serving alcohol.
Understood. So, that's served. Otherwise, it's served and sold. Shouldn't that be checked off? You can check it off.
No, I don't, what I guess what we're saying is that I think what, I mean?
I mean, does anyone actually sell cans of beer? I mean, just here, take it home with you, like bottles of wine?
No, but if that was, if that's what they were doing, then that's what you check.
I didn't know we had, yeah. Because you're not, if you're wedding, you're not selling the booze, but you're serving it. So, I was thinking if it's served and sold.
Well, even if it's an open bar, you're selling it to the people who are paying for the open bar, so.
No, I understand, I'm just trying to determine whether it's just the way this form is, because we got a couple of these that there, nothing's checked off.
Mike, you mentioned that you had looked at the approvals at the Town Hall today. I noted in the second page that at least the police and the fire have not signed up on it.
Yeah, I mean, the reason I partially went in was because the paperwork was submitted a little bit later than we anticipated, so we're kind of scrambling to get this done on time. And we're still waiting for comment from Chief DeLassio, and he, you know, his comments came back regarding detail officers and a fenced-in area where the alcoholic beverages would be served, and with those wishes granted, you know, he gave us his final approval, which put everything in order.
Okay.
So. So, I would ask all in favor?
Aye.
And no discussion? Motion passes? Anything under old business?
No old business, no new business, no financial matters.
New business?
Oh, Denise, yeah, Denise just said there's nothing under all, any of those.
Oh, you don't have any?
Nope, B, C, or D, nope.
So, um, and there's no one here from the planning board at this time, so.
If I may, is there a specific time for the public hearing?
Six-thirty.
Oh, okay. Well, that's, that's apropos.
Good timing.
Everyone here for the public hearing.
Uh, no, you have to read the... Do we, clarification, do we need someone, some member of the planning board to be present for this hearing?
If he wants to speak to it.
Right. It's a chance they take that they don't, um, that, that's, that's after. The, the, that, that there might be questions and they're not addressed, but public hearing is open today and continued to the next meeting.
Okay.
So maybe they're planning on coming to the next meeting. I did not ask that, you know, if, if anybody wanted to attend.
Can I ask a question of the audience?
Absolutely.
Question, anyone here in the audience specifically here for the public hearing on the marijuana bylaw?
Okay, so there'll be somebody to speak.
Okay.
Under the public hearing part. So I think my, I think what it'll be you is the process for the public hearing, so the first thing you do, you have to read the notice, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, and this would follow, right?
Yeah. And the public hearing is, does it have a summary?
I don't have.
It's on the back page of the last, your last document.
The Rotary Club.
Oh, Rotary?
Okay.
With memorandum?
Yeah.
There you go.
All right, it's too...
I should know on the Rotary.
So which?
Can you read it or?
I think, yeah.
I'll read it.
Can you read that?
Sure. East Slough Meadow Town Council Public Hearing. The East Slough Meadow Town Council will hold a public hearing on October tenth, 2017, at six-thirty PM in the media room of the Council on Aging located at three-twenty-eight North Main Street to address a proposal for a new bylaw prohibiting the use, growth, cultivation, manufacture, and/or sale of marijuana for recreational use in the town. Information related to this application is on file with the town clerk and the planning board and available for review by the public.
So you're opening a public hearing?
Okay.
Which is, which is...
Okay.
So just announce that you're opening a public hearing.
So, I'd like to announce that we're gonna open the public meeting and announce the council members from left to right. So, I guess I'll start with myself here. Mike Kane.
Jethlin Hill.
Don Anderson.
Paul Federece.
Tom O'Connor.
And clerk will read the legal notice, right?
You read it.
You read the legal notice.
So you go on to the next step.
Okay, so we have the applicant here?
No applicant here, just asking. No applicant is here. Okay, so, so then you go on to the next step.
Okay.
Which should be to ask the public.
Okay, so at, at this time, I'd like to ask, the applicant is not here, you can come forward if you'd like. And the meeting is being recorded, and I will need all persons who are speaking to identify themselves clearly and state their home address for the record.
Senator Pat Henry, fifty-four, Ridge, East Slough Meadow. And my only question is, I thought the state approved the use of marijuana. How can the Town Hall deny the use?
Of marijuana when the state has already approved it by a voter election? I thought this whole idea was for sale, distribution, manufacture, growth, and that's what the planning board was working on. Is anybody listening?
Yes.
If I could, yes, I, I agree with you. I think that we can't, I think, I think I know what they're, I know what the intent is, and the question is, that's probably why this may be continued. The intent, I believe, and again, we don't have anyone, any petitioner here, but if I can, if I can discern the intent from just reading this, is they don't wanna have marijuana farms and so forth here. Now, the question I have is, is this overly broad? We talk about transportation through the town. Well, we're popular transportation people, can cut through our town and Springfield on their way to Enfield, or, or actually, not legal over there, but, you know, cut through our town, you know, from Springfield to Springfield for the sake of discussion. Would they get in trouble if they got pulled over for transporta, transporting it? Well, maybe a strict construction of this could say perhaps no, because they, they were supposed to go to an establishment within the town, or is it really what they're saying? The other concern I have is we have medical facilities here in East Slough Meadow, including teaching facilities, and, you know, and marijuana is legal as a, medical marijuana for that, for that matter. So we have a medical vehicle bringing medical marijuana for purposes of research and study in, at Bay Path or another medical place in town. Does that, call that into question? And I think what the intent of the bylaw, perhaps it can be tweaked a, a little bit, is they don't wanna have, in their industrial park, for instance, marijuana, um, facilities. But I start questioning whether marijuana testing facilities and other things become overly broad. And again, the state has, I mean, the people in the state have spoken, marijuana is legal, and the, the people in East Slough Meadow have spoken that they, you know, that this town does not want the sale of recreational marijuana. The question that I think you're asking and I'm asking is, does this over, you know, is this too broad that it may actually impact legitimate existing businesses and medical facilities in East Slough Meadow to the point where we're a distraction, where it's a deterrent to open up a business in East Slough Meadow as well? Some thoughts?
I, I agree with your points completely, but my question is much more narrow. It's simply, what is the word "use"?
I think, I think that would be...
Could we, could we do it there?
It seems, if I may, it seems from what they say, they're, they're talking about license. I mean, my first thought was, okay, not, not that I'm into it, but if I wanna grow my seed plants, I don't, I don't think this, I don't think they can stop me.
I don't think so either, so.
You know, I mean, and, and another thing is, the way it's written, as, as to Counselor Anderson's point, it's sort of wishy-washy in terms, though it says recreational mari, marijuana not medically prescribed by a licensed physician, including all marijuana cultivators. If I decided to buy a building in the industrial center and create a grow facility, and it's going to be used for medicinal marijuana purposes, then it sounds like I can't do it, even though in theory I should be able to. So there's a lot, there's a lot in here that's, that's gotta be worked out.
I've not had a chance to read any of it, I'm just asking a question about use. All, all your other issues are very valid.
The planning board would be the ones to answer those questions.
Yeah, I think what we should do is, you know, continue this and get, get someone in here to answer these questions.
I also feel strongly that the impetus for this entire process began with the Board of Health back in March, April. And then there was a forum at, in late April. So, I think it beho, beho, behooves us to have the Board of Health folks be here as well.
Yes.
It, it's clear from previous meetings that the use of medical marijuana is excluded from the bylaw, as is a private citizen's right to grow six, up to six plants per individual residing at a particular residence for their own use, but they can't sell.
Right.
My understanding in attending that public hearing with the Board of Health was that the bylaw was, it was their hope that a bylaw would be approved to prohibit retail sales in, within the town, particularly with the focus on edibles, because the greatest population at risk for the edibles are minors under the, at least under eighteen, because that would be the, the, the format of, of the drug that could be easily disguised as candy or some other consumable product. But the way it's written here gives some confusion to, does it, is that really what's intended or not? So I would agree that we should probably hold, put, put this hearing off until other folks from planning board and Board of Health are able to answer.
Jim, did you have any comments?
I, I think the issue that's, that's here is that the planning board's been dealing with recreational marijuana, which is permitted under general laws, chapter ninety-four, and is most recently amended in July by the governor, unless a community votes to prohibit recreational marijuana uses or any form of marijuana uses. You can, you can allow sales but not allow cultivation, you can allow cultivation but not allow sales. That's for the community to decide. The Board of Health, in its original presentation to this council, indicated that its, its intent and purpose was to prevent the sale of marijuana for recreational purposes townwide, and any related uses that require licensing in order to further recreational use within the community would be permitted, would be not permitted. So, what there, what this bylaw is attempting to do, and this is drafted by the planning board apparently, is to say, we prohibit all recreational marijuana use in the community of East Slough Meadow. And so that's the question, that's really the, for the council, whether you feel that's the appropriate action to take. And you have to remember too, that you had a response from your populace in this situation, because you had an, you had a ballot question that was submitted to them in a special, special election in the last fiscal year, where the community said, again voted, no, we don't want recreational marijuana use in the community.
That was sales.
Yeah, that was sales.
That was sales, it wasn't use.
It was, it was this question, it was all of this, not the use, you can't prohibit the use.
Well, that's what you said, recreational marijuana use. It's, what the question when, on the ballot was, I believe, and you feel free to correct me, is they didn't want any retail sales establishments of recreational marijuana in East Slough Meadow.
And they also included the, the associated uses that along with that, that were cultivation and all of those, just the same question, I believe, but I'm not sure of that, but I believe that was the same question. The intent was, the state law says marijuana usage in, in the state is permitted. Medical marijuana prescribed by a physician is permitted. Medical facilities that issue or allow the dispensing of vertical marijuana pursuant to a prescription are permitted in the community. This bylaw has no effect on any of those. It only prohibits recreational sales or anything related to the recre, the recreational production of marijuana for the sale in the community. That's my, that's my understanding.
So I could, once again, buy a building in an industrial center and, and have a marijuana cultivating facility, as long as it's for medicinal purposes? And this doesn't affect that? 'Cause this sounds like it's, it's vague enough so that it would prohibit that.
It can't prohibit a marijuana facility that is cultivating marijuana for a medically authorized use in the community.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know, but that doesn't, this is vague enough that it, that I don't think the rest is that.
This, this bylaw is adopted under chapter ninety-four G. Chapter ninety-four G deals solely with the sale of recreational marijuana. Any medical marijuana sales are covered by a different section, and I apologize, I don't have that section or that chapter off the top of my head, but it is permitted by state law, and we can't supersede that. So, all this is dealing with is recreational uses, not dealing with any medical uses. The only thing in the new amendment that was adopted in July by the governor is that if you have a medical facility that is authorized to sell or to dispense marijuana for medical purposes, there is a procedure that allows you to convert that to a retail marijuana facility, and I don't think that this bylaw or the state statute allows you to prohibit that. But that facility would have to have been in effect or in existence or licensed by July one, two thousand seventeen. We don't have any. So that exception is not gonna apply to East Slough Meadow or any facility that applies to that.
Do we know if the planning board had any counsel as it relates to the actual wording of this bylaw, or did they author it entirely on their own?
I don't know if they approached Jim.
They did not, they did not approach me, but my understanding is, I had drafted, give you a little bit of history, I had drafted a proposed question to go before the residents for the election, which the Board of Health determined they did not wanna use, they would prefer, they preferred to use the legis, the language that was approved by the town of Westboro back in May of two thousand seventeen, and that had been approved by the Attorney General. So figuring, since that was approved by the Attorney General, let's adopt that language and let's not, let our town council create all sorts of problems for us potentially. So let's go with that. So that's what they did, and I believe this is fol, I believe, although I don't know this, 'cause I'm only seeing this coming in with the package that you received, but I believe that's the process that's been followed from the start right through to now, that they're following basically what was adopted by Westboro as far as prohibition.
But we don't know for sure. I understand the ballot question.
I cannot say to you tonight that I know that that's the language, but I will tell you, this language that's here is the same language that was discussed and presented by the planning board to this board back in the...
August.
Early summer, June, July, August, whatever it was, it's the same language.
The planning board came up with this at their September fifth meeting, and they were contacted tonight, you know, we'll meet off the meeting tonight.
Okay.
I'll go up to get him in.
So would a motion be in order to continue our public hearing?
Yeah.
With provisions of possible...
I have an additional comment.
Okay.
Actually, two additional comments. One is that I don't wanna make any trouble, but it's always possible for a town to pass a bylaw that does not pass legal muster, unconstitutional, against this law, in the hopes that they can fight it off. That's what I'm worried is possibly could be happening here.
I don't think that's an issue, to be honest.
I, I don't think it's an issue, but when, when the word "use" appears there, and one can say there are many people violently against the use of marijuana, it could be possible to say, hey, we're gonna put that in there, you know, let somebody sue us. Okay, that's, that's number one. I doubt it, I agree with Jim, but that, that's, from the standpoint of the public, I see things like this, and I, I say, is it possible?
Well, I, I guess I, I ask a question, when you say "uses," what are you talking about?
In, in common parlance, the use of marijuana is smoking it.
We cannot, as a community, we cannot, as a community, adopt the law...
I understand.
...that is opposed to a state statute. The state has already said that the use of marijuana is a permitted activity in a community in the state of Massachusetts. So, what, the only issue, I'm assuming, and I, and I ask this only for clarification, that in the proposed language that submitted under three-point-oh-one prohibited "uses," general uses, those two words there?
It's strictly, Jim, from the notice, the notice that says the effort of this public hearing was to prohibit the uses.
The notices are, are only notices to repeat, believe.
Then great, that's funny. I would draw, I would draw my question, is based strictly on what the, on what was presented to me in the paper. It said, "Planning board is considering restricting the uses of marijuana." The use of marijuana, not uses, use. And my second comment is, this is the second time I'm aware of, that a planning board presentation has been here with no planning board members presenting it, which I don't think is a good idea, because... think is a good idea, because a lot of these things would be done immediately if a representative of the planning board were here to make their pitch before the public hearing.
I think we have extenuating circumstances here with the planner being.
I agree. I understand, but.
There are some, there are some disconnects, and we're, we're working on clarifying that, and I think that's why continuation of this public hearing would definitely be in order. We need it at two meetings anyway, but it will give me time to gather some more planning background so the board can, the council can make a, an informed decision, and then any public questions can be answered.
Thanks. I, I certainly agree with Ms. Menard and Mr. Henry that there needs to be someone here, and yes, we also are working under circumstances that, that are not ideal and, but they're very understandable. But going forward, I feel strongly that any bylaw that should, that passes muster and comes before this council for approval ought to be done so with the requirement that someone from planning board, because that's where it starts, be in attendance and be well-spoken enough to address any possible concerns. And without that caveat, then I don't think it should find its way to our agenda until a, a representative. And it, it may not ever or always have to be the planner.
How are you?
Any member of the committee.
This, I believe, was brought forward not by the planning board, but by, it may be in conjunction with this, but I believe it was brought forward by the board.
It did, it was.
No, it was by the planner. It was the planner that did that one. Yes.
My understanding, my recollection.
It was two separate, it was, I, I was part of a lot of the messiness that went on behind the scenes on that. And there, there were two paths at the same time. One was the planning board and the planner specifically, and the other was the Board of Health. Once the Board of Health's vote was passed at the last election, the Board of Health's piece is done.
Okay.
And they did not participate in any of the planning piece. That's solely the planning department.
Okay.
My take is not to move this to the next meeting, but move it a few meetings out. And I'm saying that, and based on your earlier manager, Denise's early manager report, Town Manager Report, talking about getting PVPC involved.
That's a good.
And I think our PVPC consultant, dealing with a bylaw of this magnitude, should be present, because that individual can give information that crosses beyond Eastline Meadow in terms of, you know, because I remember my planning board days, PVPC was an amazing resource that we had. And, and I think that was, you know, that's, that's someone that if we have a few hours a week, maybe one of those hours can come into and talk to us with, with somebody from the planning department and be able to discuss this thing on a more, Eastline Meadows, but perhaps also, as he suggested, with Westboro, more regional level, just to see if this thing has any unintended consequences. I would say move it into December.
Well, that's, if we're going to read it into the motion, can we pick a date?
Our first meeting in December.
I mean, our first.
I mean, I don't care if it's November.
Is this time sensitive in any other way?
How quickly can we get a consultant?
Oh, I think very quickly.
Oh, then November, then? Okay, I wasn't sure what the timeline was.
I would think the first meeting in November might be.
That's fine.
A more appropriate time, just because you don't want to lose sight of it and then all of a sudden.
No, I, I just wasn't sure how.
Yes.
Floating out there, this whole PVPC thing.
It's pretty close to.
Then that's fine.
Yeah, it's something I hope to accomplish this week.
And what's the first meeting in November?
Fourteenth.
All right, six thirty to fourteenth?
Well, we have to have a motion.
All right, I'll make a motion to continue this public hearing to November fourteenth at this location at six thirty P M.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We'll see if we can get, and make sure if the planning board's not meeting that night, if they are, if they don't mind joining us.
They're not.
And then see if we can get that, whoever our PVPC consultant is, give them, him or her a copy of this, and then see what we can, see what the thoughts are now that we know what our concerns are.
We need to adjourn from the public hearing.
Yes.
Yes.
Adjourn the public hearing.
Right, you, you, no, you.
No, we do not close it.
We continued it.
No, no.
So now we have to move.
A motion to go into executive session.
I move that we move into.
If we need it.
Do we need to? Jim, do, Jim, we have anything for executive session? Jim?
Jim, any list for executive session tonight?
I do not.
So you don't need to, so then you need to.
I have a few questions regarding the executive session minutes from last time.
Don't, 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 don't say that at this point. We'd have to go into executive session to discuss the executive session.
We could do that.
And didn't we already approve them?
We already approved the minutes.
Yeah, we already approved the minutes.
No, there's just comments that were made, and I just wanted to get clarification on that.
Well, in order to do that, we have to go into executive session.
Or.
Not if they're already approved.
Yeah, they're, well.
It has nothing to do with the minutes. It has to do with the discussion.
With the discussion.
He just wants to discuss the discussion.
Then we have to go to executive.
Well, then, yeah, you can't.
Or can somebody answer your questions one-on-one?
Or you can discuss it outside the meeting with Denise or something, but.
Yeah, can, can, can somebody answer your questions one-on-one?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So we just need a motion to adjourn, right? Could we have, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moves.
So moves.
Fall in favor?
Aye.
Aye.